Thank you guys for joining us this evening. Before we get started on the agenda, if you would, rise with me as far as we'll do the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Covert will lead us into invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you tonight asking for your blessing on this meeting, Lord, also for the leaders of our city and for our state and our country, Lord. We know this has been an extremely tough week for many. We just ask you to be with their families as they go through this time. She's saying. It is a pretty tough week and I'll start with one thing before I can get going on the agenda. I won't mention names of it, but we had two people in Springdale that were impacted by the events that happened in Las Vegas. Both of them are safely home, but both of them are with either our city or school system and showed heroic efforts to save people around them. So, I just wanted to thank them for that. With that, we will start, call this meeting to order, the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. If we can do roll call.
All the buttons pushed.
Compton.
Here.
Covert.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
Panado.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Tyler.
Here. All right. Any questions or comments on the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right. First item on the agenda, public hearing rezoning. Actually, there was one tabled item that actually has to be resubmitted altogether that was on the agenda and so we'll have that next month, I believe. The next section is a public hearing on rezoning, R-17-28, Phil and Sally Beulah, 4721 Levine Avenue from A1 to SF2 presented by Phil and Sally Beulah. If I could have you come up to the mic and state your name and address for me, please. Thank you.
Sally Beulah, 500 Madison, 5550 Elkins, Arkansas, 72727.
Thank you.
The property you're requesting to rezone is a .95 acre tract located at 4721 Levine Avenue, correct? Okay. They're asking to rezone the property from A1 to SF2. The comprehensive land use plan indicates medium density residential area for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility and environmental factors and assure adequate land allocations for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size.
All right. Any questions or comment from the audience?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have an offer on our property and in order for us to finalize the sale of our property, not only do we have to rezone it from agricultural to single family low density, we also have to have permission for a lot split so they can tear down that old ratty red garage we have and build a really nice house. And that would give a lot of revenue.
The property has to be rezoned first before you can split.
And then what's, then how?
And then if you'll submit the survey with the information, we can do that as administrative lot split because it already has public street access and that kind of stuff.
Okay. We've already got all of that submitted to you.
Right. But it has to be rezoned first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
That's you, Megan. You gotta call for the, okay. Go down the list.
17-28.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. The rezoning passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on October the 24th. That's the soonest it can be rezoned. And once, if it's approved that night, then we can process the lot split right after that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
They can do the lot split in the office.
We already have it. We just have to wait for it to get rezoned.
Thank you all. Next section is conditional use. First one, C-17-07, Mary Ellen Johnson, parcel 815-308-56-000 north of 4912 Trout Farm Roads. Along with this is a lot split 17-31 and a waiver of payment requirements presented by Mary Ellen Johnson.
Yes, my name is Ben Johnson. I'm, Mary Ellen Johnson is my mother and she's currently in the hospital.
Okay. Does she sign authorization for you to represent her tonight?
Ma'am, she just went to the hospital Sunday. We kept thinking she was gonna get to come home.
Okay. Sarah. Sarah, we don't have an authorization for him to do that tonight.
We were not aware we would need something.
Well, we all plan on her being here and...
It would be my recommendation to wait until we have a signed authorization form. It's kinda like showing up to court without a lawyer. I think we need documentation before we have that heard.
Look through the file one more time to make sure, but we don't have, we don't have anything that authorizes anybody to represent her.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so we'll have to table this one?
Sorry.
Yes, sir. If you can come to the mic, please.
Is there any way, my name is Ron Harrison. I'm sorry. Been here 51 years, know most of you. We are the adjoining property owners to at least three acres of the property in question here. The northern side of the property being considered, we have a private road. It's Harper Lane. There are three houses that sit on top of the hill and no one other than the three families there have access to that road. And we have a sign at the bottom of the hill that asks you to be a guest or please don't use the road. Our concerns, my other neighbor here beside me has access to the road. We're two of the neighbors. The other one called, he couldn't get out of his meeting to be here. But we have the only access to this property. There's no public access to that property and there's no water, sewer, gas, or anything to that. And Mary Ellen, I mean, Mary Ellen Johnson's a 40-year friend of mine and I love her to death and I'm sorry to hear she's in the hospital. But with our concerns here tonight and we're here, do you want to hear the?
Without the applicant here or somebody to represent her that has the authority, we really can't hear it tonight.
I just wanted to know, you know, are you aware?
They are aware that they have to provide access from the south rather than from the north. I mean, we've already been through all that kind of stuff too, so we know those situations are already there.
Okay, well, see, we're not privy to that, Kristi. We're, we're sitting in the dark until, in fact, we found out about the hearing because there was a sign posted down at Cona Johnson's daughter's house, which is two blocks from us and there's nothing upon our property and I have adjoining property and I wasn't even aware until we saw the sign down the street. So, that's how we're making note of this.
Okay.
Yeah, those cards that you have there don't have any signatures from the neighbors. You've got some signatures, but they're not ours.
Well, here's one that says Rudy Harper that was signed on...
Okay, look at the handwriting on those cards. They're all the same. Mary Ellen signed them. And then she took the cards before we ever got the letter to her mailbox.
Okay, I can't address that because they were sent out like they were supposed to. Not all the signatures are the same. But nonetheless, she met the requirements in that the white notices are here, the green cards have been returned like they're supposed to.
Well, none of us signed the cards. We did not get those cards to sign. They were torn off the back of our envelopes before they were entered in our mailbox.
Well, now, she sent out a second one.
So, with this being...
Because the first one, she, we know wasn't done correctly.
So, with this being tabled till next month, will there be a need for them to be re-notified?
Sarah, do we need to make sure it gets re-notified?
I think that you don't have to send out notice.
Because it's being tabled the first time.
Well, I'm not worried about the notice. What I'm worried about is we're gonna have to come back down here and re-address all this again.
Well, this is, this is something I can't hear tonight on it because they don't have representation.
Okay. Well, you've heard what I had to say, so you know, you're aware of the problem. She says she knows about the ingress and egress.
Yeah, we've had those conversations.
Just as a record-making recommendation, anything that you've said tonight, I'd recommend you forward to the planning department because technically, since we can't hear it tonight, what he's saying cannot be taken into consideration tonight.
So, just send me an email. Send me an email with the same concerns in it.
And what you have, if you send an email or a letter in, then it can be read.
Right. It can be into the record.
For the minutes as far as the next meeting.
You can't even take a map that we've got with us tonight and...
Just submit it to me with an email or a letter so that we all have it in writing. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm Matt Bowers. I live to the, I guess, east of the property. Will they announce a new date for when this will occur?
The next, the planning commission meets the first Tuesday of every month.
First Tuesday of every month.
So, it'll be whatever the October meeting, I mean, the November meeting day is.
I sent an email this afternoon just showing some pictures that this, some of the properties in a flood zone. Did you all receive that?
We do have those.
Okay, perfect. So, those will be addressed then next time. All right, thank you.
The next planning commission meeting will be November the 7th at 5:00.
Next item on the agenda, C-17-08, Clint Branham, 717 Carlton, Use Unit 28, Home Occupation in SF2 presented by Clint Branham. Phil, state your name for the record.
Clint Branham.
Okay. Any other, any comments or anything on this one here?
Can you explain to us what you want to do?
I've got a little small computer CNC router and I'm wanting to start a business where I'm doing little plaques like what your little name plates are in front of you or do a little small woodworking project.
Okay. Will you have any employees at that location?
No, ma'am.
Okay, will you have people coming to your house? All of this will be by mail order or you will deliver the info? Okay.
Yeah, no foot traffic at all.
Okay. This is located at 717 Carlton Street. The ingress and egress of the property is acceptable. Off-street parking and loading areas are unknown because there was no site plan, but you have a standard driveway, paved driveway for two vehicles.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a two-car garage?
Yes.
Has it been enclosed or do you still park vehicles in it?
I still park one vehicle and my machines in the other park.
Okay. Refuge and service area is acceptable. The utilities are acceptable. There's no screening and buffering requirements. Signage is not allowed. You can't put out any signs. The yard requirements are acceptable. The size and shape of the site is acceptable. There is no requirements for any additional landscaping. These are the conditions of approval. No alteration of the outside appearance of the residential structure, provision of a separate outside entrance for the business areas of the residential structure. No outside storage of materials required for the operation of the business. Operated only by the resident members of the household and shall not have any employees, concessionaires, or any other form of operator or helper whether such business is conducted on the premises or off the premises. Requires the use of an area no greater than 30% of the total heated living space of the residential neighborhood. Will not produce any fumes, odors, noise, or other offensive effects that are not normal to residential activity. Will not involve accessory buildings and stock and trade shall not exceed 10% of the floor area of the accessory. Those would be the recommended conditions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Misha?
I'm just not told. I do have one question. Are there certain hours that you will be running the machine or will it be open to 24 hours a day, 7 days a week?
Basically during daylight hours.
Okay. The only reason I ask this question is, and I, I think it's awesome and I wish him the best of luck on all of it, but we do have a lot of complaints from even those that are doing just hobby work in their garages from the neighbors on the sound. The buzzing noise of the machines after hours early in the morning. So, that was one thing I wanted to bring up and just kinda ask the question when, when the hours would be that this would be used.
Thanks, Misha.
And what was your answer?
During the daylight hours.
Any other questions or comments? It's to the commission. Call for the vote. Call for the vote by Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes. Additional use passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution. It goes to council on the 24th.
Okay. Thank you.
Next section, replats, 17-10, replats of lots 6 and 7, Brad's Plumbing, north of West Sunset and end of Clayton, West Side presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with Engineering Services. We are requesting a combination of lots 6 and 7 in the industrial park, Sunset Industrial Park. I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
I don't think we had any outstanding comments, did we?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. Call for the vote. Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
The replat passes nine zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by Thursday evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Jason, we'll just go ahead as far as that because the next section is large scale. We'll just do the Brad's Plumbing.
You want it or we can just wait? I mean, I'm gonna...
Well, you've got quite a few, don't you, on it?
Yeah.
So, we need a chair for you, won't we? All right. We'll come back to it. Okay, it's the first large scale, L-17-25, Mercy Southeast Corner of Elm Springs Road, 48th Street, Concept of Detention presented by Craft and Toll.
My name is Daniel Ellis with Craft and Toll and Associates. This project that we're... Am I talking too loud? This project that we're presenting tonight to the planning commission is for a 59,000 square foot medical facility be located at the corner of Elm Springs and 40, can't remember the name of the street. 48th Street, yes. Apologize for that. What they're showing you right now are some, or some elevations that were presented to the building. I don't know if the renderings I emailed in this morning got sent to you or not to show the planning commissioners. No. No, I sent it to Debbie.
We did get them though. I mean, they look just like this.
Yeah. They're like this. It was, it was just kinda a more clear picture of what it was gonna look like on the job site. I think we don't have any variances or waivers that we're asking for. The only thing we're asking for is the concept of detention. We are proposing a retention pond to be located in the southeast corner of the property. We have sized that to do stormwater control for the entire 30-some acres, not just for this initial part of the project would be the best way to put that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission has.
There was a helipad that was shown on the drawing.
Yes, sir.
What impact does that have as far as other structures around that?
I think they're, they have addressed all the concerns that comes from MIA or...
Yeah. When we, you know, when we design helipads, you know, you have to look at several different things, including glide slopes, approaches, GPS beacons and things like that. And that's kinda why we always like to set it right up next to the interstate because you've got a nice open corridor without any structures around it, which gives you some nice approaches to the helipad. We just got done relocating the two up there in Rogers and it's, you know, it's a real similar situation. I'm sure they're gonna approach from the north or from the south, kind of in line with the interstate to land on the helipad and we don't, we don't foresee any issues with that.
There was a little bit of an issue with the fencing, but I think we got that all taken care of too.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Staff comments?
There is a little discussion about the frontage landscaping, but I think we can work that out. I think the intent is being met. We just need to make sure we got all the calculations correct.
Yes, ma'am.
The developers are required to dedicate right-of-way of an abutting street in conformance with the city of Springfield Master Street Plan. A separate dedication document shall be submitted to the city for filing. All comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed. Submit a unified lighting plan. Submit a PDF of the drainage report to engineering. The concept of detention must be approved by the planning commission. An easement shall be provided in plans for the detention facility, a minimum 20-foot wide drainage easement shall be provided around the 100-year flood pool connecting the tributary pipes and the discharge system along the most passable road and piping systems. Ownership of the detention facility will remain with the land. The drainage easement needs, needed for pipe connecting the pipe to our dots right-of-way. The site plant, site of disturbance is greater than one acre. Approval of the stormwater pollution prevention plan and proof of, some of a grading permit by the stormwater program coordinator must be submitted to the planning office prior to final approval of construction plans before grading permit or SWIP can be approved. A dust control plan must be included in the SWIP. I think those are basically our comments.
That's it? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Is it the concept of detention first?
Right. Concept of detention.
So, what is, what was the idea of putting a retention pond instead of a detention pond?
To be an amenity to the patients at the facility. I think all the Mercy projects we've designed that's of this size, we've put retention ponds on there. We add fountains to them. I won't get into the debate on water quality, but retention ponds actually do help with water quality. Also, we are gonna have a helipad there with, you know, some of that work and I think having, having a water quality feature and an amenity on the side is a, is a plus and that's why we're asking for the retention pond. We are gonna design safety benches in it, things like that, so it will be safe.
Any other questions or comments?
Call for the vote on the concept of detention.
This is a motion to approve. Motion to approve concept of detention.
I have a motion by Mrs. Haney on the concept of detention. The second?
Second.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes. Concept of detention passes nine zero. Need a motion on large scale?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney? Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. There's a second by Mr. Tyler on the concept of detention, so...
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes. Large scale passes nine zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Springdale.
Yes. Excited to have you here. Next large scale, 17-26, White Cap Incorporated, 4784 North Thompson. I also have a variance, B-17-51, variance for modification of commercial design standards regarding fence materials presented by Gray Rock.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dirk Tibodo. I am with Gray Rock, representing the owner.
Okay, this one is a little bit different in that we've already approved a large-scale development plan. It's under construction and you're making modifications to the approved large scale. So, you wanna talk about what the modifications are?
That is correct. So, when we came to you before, we had outdoor storage. We still have outdoor storage. They just, White Cap wanted to have an additional area of storage. So, the storage yard is going another 100 feet to the west. So, the fence line is remaining the same. It's just projecting to the rear of the property. We're getting 7,000, roughly 7,000 square feet more of paved storage area, outdoor storage.
And then you're also doing some kind of a covered structure for some of that storage outside?
Yes. So, in that, that back storage area, they do store lumber and the lumber is underneath, basically a pole barn. It's a three-sided structure that has a roof and one open side to keep the lumber dry.
And this is crossing where that gas line easement was? Is it a gas line?
It's on the backside of it. So, we have two easements behind White Cap. We have a gas easement and then we have a utility easement. So, this is in between the two. So, half of the storage yard is over the gas easement and the backside of the storage yard is going up to the power line easement, which is why on our storage area, part of the storage area is gravel due to the nature of the gas easement doesn't allow us to have concrete on that portion of the easement.
Okay, and so you will actually be putting gravel on the entire easement now and using the entire easement for storage?
The entire easement directly behind, no, the entire easement is not used for storage because the entire easement goes across the whole property. The storage is only behind the building.
Okay. I wanna make sure everybody understands that. And then the building will be further to the west of that. Now, we did screening, a variance on the screening allowing the...
Yeah, so originally when we came through, the fencing that we proposed was the black chain link. So, we wanna continue with the same material for the additional storage yard.
I understand what we're, we're really extending it further to the west than what The building in the back, which will be, as you said, a pole barn type thing, will be on all metal structure. Nothing else other than that, but it doesn't face the street. It is in the back of a-
So are we having to just vote on the variance?
Well-
Because we've already approved the large scale?
Right. We've already approved the large scale and we're actually modifying it to allow this additional structure to go in there and to allow the fencing material That we approved before to be continued on around the rest of the site.
Yes ma'am, that is correct.
But just on the west side?
Right, just on the west side. Everything that we approved before stays just like it was. We're just adding all this, it's just-
But because there's an addition on that-
Yeah, the storage yard is just pushing to the west a little bit further. It's getting a little bit deeper in nature. It's still staying in the same alignment behind the building. The building is still controlling the fence line.
Normally, we would've done this without coming back to you guys, since they wanted to add the pole barn in the back and that wasn't included in the original proposal. That's really why we're here.
Correct.
Is this impacting the current construction?
I don't think so. Y'all are moving great guns out there. I can't see this slow down a whole lot, yeah.
Uh, it's making a lot of progress.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Alright. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote on the variance?
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney?
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero.
Then we need a motion to, uh, approve, subject to staff comments, the revised large scale development, which will allow that additional building and additional storage area.
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Powell?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haney?
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
And that passes, uh, nine zero, large scale. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next item, L seventeen dash twenty-seven, Blue Ribbon Lawns forty-one forty-nine North Thompson. Concept of detention presented by McClellan Engineering.
Good evening. My name is Chris Bakounis. Um, our client wishes to, uh, relocate their landscape and lawn business to Springdale and construct, uh, roughly about a thirty-eight hundred square foot, uh, building. It'll house their office and, um, maintenance facility. Uh, also have associated parking, two greenhouses, and room for, uh, storing plants.
No variance is being requested.
No ma'am.
The only thing you're asking for is the concept of detention to be approved, okay? Uh, a screening fence is required in accordance with chapter fifty-six, and there was some discussion you wanted to use just trees for the screening fence?
Yeah, exist- there's an existing row of trees back there right now, so if that, if we could use those to serve that requirement, we would like to, but The client is willing to, uh, add more if we need to.
We have never used just a row of trees to be screening by itself. Usually, it's a screening fence with trees that goes along with it.
Okay.
So this is why you are getting this one directly. The other one is all comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. Submit a PDF of the drainage report to engineering. The concept of detention must be approved by the planning commission. The site area of disturbance is greater than one acre. Proof of similar of a grading permit by the stormwater program coordinator must be submitted to the planning office prior to final approval of construction plans Before a grading permit or SWIP can be approved, a dust control plan must be included in the SWIP. That's what. The only issue then is the, uh, issue of the screening fence. Are you going to, can you go back and modify that to me, the requirements of chapter fifty-six with something in addition to the trees?
Yeah, we, we can.
Okay, so then that, that comment you'll address, so really we don't have any comments left other than to approve the concept of detention.
Was there anything on the, uh, materials as far as, okay? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So they will put the fence then?
They will do a fence with the trees incorporated into it, yes.
Okay.
Where they can get an approved setup plans. So we need a call for the vote on this. This detention not, there's no retention. This is just a standard retention pond. Right, okay.
Call, call for the vote on the concept of detention.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney?
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passes nine zero. And motion on large scale?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert?
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Large scale passes nine zero.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, now we're back to you, Jason. Uh, L seventeen dash twenty-eight, Brad's Plumbing, north of West Sunset, end of Clayton, west side. Uh, concept of detention. We have two variances, B seventeen dash fifty-six, variance deletion of paved parking requirements. Var- it's for modification of commercial design standards presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We are proposing, uh, a thirty-six hundred square foot addition to the north, um, for Brad's Plumbing. Um, we were basically going to continue the, the same, the bay doors, um, as currently, as their current building looks. And, and so we're, we're just extending that same look across the front. They've got a, kind of a brick veneer four foot, uh, on the bottom, and then the rest is a metal, metal building. And that's the commercial design variance we're requesting for, requesting. And I'll answer any other questions.
Staff comments?
Okay, so the proposed addition is more than fifty percent of the gross square footage of the existing building?
Yes.
Uh, was the, was a variance granted for the original building that was built to this standard, to meet the commercial design standards? I don't remember, so who was the building built?
I don't, I don't know if we did that. I don't know if we even, if we did that one or not.
Do we know when the building was built? And I apologize, I've been out for the last week and a half in and out, so I haven't had a chance to look at this as well as we could.
Yeah, I'm not sure when the building was built, the current building.
I mean, you didn't, Brad didn't build, it wasn't built for Brad's Plumbing, or was it built for something else?
I don't know the history of the building.
Okay, I don't either. Okay. My concern is that we are, the application of the design standards says that you have to meet one of the two provisions. It says additions or alterations to a building or site excluding interior only improvements which total fifty percent or more of the gross square footage of the existing building or site. Means that you have to comply to all commercial design standards. So you're asking for a variance of that so that it is allowed to contain with just a, what, what height is the brick, uh, wainscoting and it's only along the front? And how tall is it?
It's only along the front. It's, uh, approximately four feet high across the front.
And you're, you're doing no changes to the sides, either side of the building itself, just that along the front?
Correct. Correct.
Are you doing any landscaping adjacent to the building or a side? Or are the pedestrian walkway around the front? Basically, you're adding, asking to just continue the building just as it is and not meeting any of the other provisions of the, of the design standards, correct?
Correct. I mean, we can't really add any landscaping in front with the bay doors that are, the, the way it's oriented.
Are you doing additional landscaping around the side adjacent to the street or in the parking area or in the perimeters or anything to pick up some additional landscaping?
We're currently showing the required landscaping along the frontage of the new parking area.
But none along the existing?
They do have, um, They do have landscaping and trees on that southern side. I can pass these around.
You pull directly out of the parking, out of the street into the parking lot?
Say that, I'm sorry.
Is there a curb along the front of the, the building?
No. It's kind of a, I don't know how wide it is there. It's the width of the front of the building.
Okay. Uh, other question, let me do the rest of them and I come back to these. All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. And then you're requesting deletion of the paved parking requirements. What area are you trying not to pave?
The north side of the building. Um, we're basically adding a lay down storage area for, for the outdoor plumbing facilities.
Material supplies only, not vehicles being, uh, but vehicles will go in and out to pick up materials. Are you proposing a paved drive in and out of that and storing materials?
It's all paved in front. Just the lay down yard is-
In your storage area is where you have that. Will there be any paved driveway, any paved access for vehicles to go in and out to pick up materials out of there?
Not currently shown.
Um, you don't have any central features, anything like that being proposed?
I had, I added a bench for the central features, yes.
Have a bench, okay. Okay, mark that one off. Uh, do you have, uh, what kind of roofing? Is it a flat roof? Is it, uh, it doesn't have a break in height every hundred feet in the building length? You're proposing the same roof length, the entire length of the building, and how long will that be when it's finished?
It's about a hundred and thirty feet long. No, no breaks.
Okay. Uh, did you submit a unified lighting plan?
Did not.
That we need a unified lighting plan. The site area of disturbance is less than a half acre, so a grading permit is not required. However, please advise the contractor owner that although the site is less than one acre, we do expect all grading and erosion BMPs to be used. Protect the existing storm drainage system. We require a SWIP and erosion control plan in event of discharges of sediment from the site. So the basic request then for variance of the modification of the commercial design standards is to let the building continue with the new addition just as it is. And what you have shown on the plan for minimum amount of landscaping requirements and, uh, non-paved area for storage of equipment. Not necessarily equipment, but for lay down materials.
Correct. We could add additional landscaping along the south side of the building and then along our fenced area to the north.
Okay, you could add, you said enough?
Yes.
So landscaping on both the south and north?
The north and sides, north and south sides, yes.
Okay. Patsy, anything else? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
I think I would, I would, from my personal standpoint, would be that if they're driving in and out of the storage Be a drive for them to have access to it.
Okay.
And, and the other would be that Um, if, Patsy, if the wains, if, if the brick that's in the front goes around to the side as well, is that, would that fall? Is that the only thing that's keeping it from commercial design standards?
Well, it'd be ca- I'm not sure that any of the existing meets the commercial design standards at all. Uh, you know, because its predominant material is not something other than a metal building. Now, we have allowed wainscoting in other areas where it was along the front and the sides of the building. The front of the building wouldn't, would not necessarily be allowed to be the metal building itself, and it could be on the sides and the back.
Okay. Cause I, I mean, I have a hard time Allowing that large of a building to go under the grandfathered in. You know, we've just, we've not allowed it for other people and, and That's an area that to me needs to be brought up a little bit and not In the old, old school.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I got one about the, the gravel. That drainage ditch going through the middle of the gravel, or is it going to the-
It's on the north side of that, yeah. It's not going through there. It's actually north of our property line.
And you're just basically just gonna put heavy duty equipment and?
Just basically pipe, storage materials, yeah, plumbing materials.
What kind of screening material are you doing for that outside storage?
Uh, showing the eight foot opaque screen fence.
So Jason, you said you could add landscaping on the north and the south ends of the property, okay?
Yeah, I mean, we can add like a evergreen tree on twenty-fives or, I mean, is that sufficient? That's typical.
Well, we're not gonna sit here and design-
Well, that's typical, that's, that's what I'm proposing.
If you could submit to a, say, landscaping plan that shows us two areas. Uh, Mrs. Haney suggested a paved drive through that storage area for vehicles. Is that something that could be done at least for where the vehicle access would be in and out?
Yes.
Could be paved? Okay, so you could add that to your drawing as well?
So I'm gathering that you're probably gonna wanna hear these variances separate. Our vote on these separate?
Yes, I'd prefer that.
Okay.
Cause basically it is a variance of the lands, of the commercial design standards to allow it to be as Showed with the minimal, uh, Wainscoting, adding landscaping on the north and the south sides. That's basically the only changes that you're-
Yeah, is, is the wainscoting gonna be along the side as well as the front?
I thought you were only proposing along the front.
It's just along the front, yes. It's not along the-
Along the front.
I mean, the north side's gonna be in, inside that screened area. And then the south side is existing and I, I was, you know, hoping to leave the existing building the way it was, so that's, that's the reason those, the sides aren't shown.
So it would be just a continuation of that four foot to the new addition?
Yes.
To the, uh, northern edge of the building? You did say you had a bench. We'll submit a lighting plan. Uh, you don't have a break in the, in the roof line. It will be, you said, over a hundred linear feet without any breaks? Uh, the panels do not have any, the facade doesn't have a repeating pattern that breaks that's more than twelve inches because it's a smaller metal panel in it than twelve inches?
Yeah.
And you don't have the five foot sidewalk along the full length of the building either, along the front? No front, no foundation landscaping either. And you have more than sixty percent of the off-street parking is located between the front facade and the front yard. All of your parking is between the front of the building and the, and the street.
Yes.
That's the other parts of the commercial design standards that they're asking for.
Okay.
Variance would include, would include all of those.
Any other questions or comments? So we do the concept of detention?
Call for the vote, concept of detention?
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell?
There's, there's no detention.
There's no con-
Okay. That was my fault on it, so, okay. So call for the votes, uh, Do I have a call for the vote on the first variance, deletion of paved parking?
Call for the vote on variance A.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney?
Okay, that's with the modification that we'll have a paved vehicle access into it, correct, Jason?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Uh, first variance for deletion of paid parking requirements passes nine zero. Have a call for the vote for the modification of commercial design standards?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert?
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
No.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
No.
Uh, variance passes, uh, seven to two. And large scale?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comment.
Motion by Mr. Powell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert?
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Large scale passes nine zero. Uh, next item, L seventeen dash twenty-nine, NWA Towing, northeast corner of Mockingbird and Ingram. Uh, concept of detention, B seventeen dash fifty-five, variance for deletion of paid parking requirements presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Into it, NWA Towing, um, would like to put a three thousand square foot building, um, on this piece of property. It'll house an office with some, with the shop area in the back, um, with the main intent for, uh, storage of vehicles in the rear of the property. And I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Uh, did you submit, uh, elevations?
Yes.
Did everybody get a chance to look at those?
I've got them.
Aaron, can you bring those up? What is the predominant building material? Can you talk about the predominant building materials that you're using on this building? The front elevation has the brick Cinder block on the bottom?
It does, yes.
What's the rest of the material?
And the rest is metal panel. It's a, it's not just your standard metal panel, it's a higher end metal panel. I know that's kinda tricky. I had to ask for some assistance with, with that.
You have, have, have you submitted a sample of what it looks like?
No.
We, we may have to get to the point where we're gonna start looking at metal panels, that we need to have a sample of what that material is. Like we used at the hospital, Children's Hospital, it's metal panel, but it's a different kind and a different grade. We haven't had those in the past, and then the rest of the building itself will be metal panels?
That same metal panel.
Same metal panels, okay. Um, all comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. Uh, we need a lighting plan. Did you submit a lighting plan?
I don't believe we did.
Okay, we need a lighting plan. Uh, predominant exterior building material should be high quality materials, and we just talked about that. Uh, the concept of detention must be approved by the planning commission. The area, the site of area of disturbance is greater than one acre. Proof of similar of a grading permit By the stormwater program coordinator must be submitted to the planning office prior to final approval of construction plans Before a grading, grading permit or SWIP can be approved, a dust control plan must be included in the SWIP. Uh, and you're asking for deletion of paid parking requirements. Are you asking for that with a bill of assurance for a limited time period?
We're asking for that for the rear, um, the rear area that's inside the fencing for a year, yes.
For a year?
Yes.
With submission of a
Bill of assurance.
Bill of assurance, okay. That helps too. And it will have gravel and that stuff put on it until that?
Yes.
Okay. And have you submitted a cross section of what that gravel looks like? Is it four inches at least?
Yeah, it'll be six or more.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, sir. If you'll come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Norman Smith. I've moved to nine seventeen Parker Avenue. I work, uh, till at least midnight and- I work, uh, till at least midnight and get home and go to sleep. I don't turn my radio on loud or, I don't turn it on all at night and just sit during daytime, but... I wake up, bed, middle of the night, there was noises around, and I don't get much sleep on two nights a week. My, Friday night, Friday morning, I get up at five, a little bit at five, and be someplace fatal. Before six, and I've cooked back a bunch of guys, the church I go to, and same morning, sit chairs up, new eyes church, Mason boys, girls club. I, so, so the two nights a week, I don't get much sleep. And I wake up in the middle of the night, and I try to sleep late on, during daytime. I wake up eight o'clock or before and...
So your concern is, uh, the hours of operation?
Yeah, the no, uh, trucks back up, they make a lot of noise, plus I hear that train every night, and I got a dog next door, he, uh, it's a small dog.
Right.
It barks at anything in the yard or other noises outside.
Well, I mean, this will have to obviously follow as far as the noise.
It'll have to meet the noise ordinance as far as that's concerned, yes.
And all the trucks, the, yep, going up and down the street, it's not that wide, just enough for two vehicles. These tow trucks are a little bit wider than a regular vehicle. That's a small, Ingram is a small street anyway, and so is Parker.
But they'll be accessing probably from a different location, right?
Well, they'll be accessing off of Ingram, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What was there before? I mean, there are other things that have access off of Ingram.
Is there any other questions or comments that you had on it? So I mean, the, the noise piece, I mean, it will have to comply as far as the noise ordinance?
Yes.
The street itself, I mean, it is within compliance as far as being able to go through there as far as, um, the accessibility to it as well.
Is there where they move it someplace else, more out of town?
That, I mean, it's a decision that we can't make as far as where this, I mean, this is a, a business that is, it's an acceptable business within that location.
permitted use in that location, yeah.
Yeah, I could have a bunch of lights on, I could see back, uh, my bedroom's in the back, no.
Well, their lighting will have to be confined as far as to that property itself.
They will submit us a unified lighting plan that will show all the lighting is contained on their site.
Yeah, be more, way, something toward me, though.
Where do you live, across, across Ingram?
Yeah, right beyond that, uh, Super Eight Motel. Don't know if you can get any closer. There's a house next to me on, by the hotel, and I'm on the...
Lives on Parker.
917.
Lives up here on, you live to the north of it? All the lighting will be directed toward the inside of the lot, not the outside?
Yeah, but it's still perfect to see it from our vantage point, too.
Well, I mean, we have a night sky ordinance that...
Like to sleep at night and...
Addresses that as well, but their lighting plan will have to show that their, their lighting is all contained on the site that itself, not bleeds over to other pieces of property.
What if they come in?
Now, am I going to tell you that you can't see the lights that are up there in the area? No, I'm not going to tell you that, but they're not going to bleed over on your property.
Yeah, they have to be contained within that property.
Will they be coming in and out all night long, or just during the evenings? Cause I'd be gone most evenings, only night I'm there is on, uh, Tuesday nights, last time I'm gone.
Well, I, I don't know that there's a limit to the operation of when that they can bring cars in and out. You know, I don't know that we have any way to limit that. The, uh, police department works with the towing company and how they operate, but I don't know that there's any limitations to the hours of operation.
Yeah, I know, uh, years ago, I was involved in an accident, my tow, vehicle got to be towed off and... I don't know, there's a residential area, that's over in Harrison, another area.
Well, I know this is a new program that the City of Springville is getting into with a single contract with a, a towing company, and so it's a new process that we're working for and have regulations on how their lot is supposed to operate. So it's operating a little bit different than it has in the past.
Yeah, there's a bunch of residential area right there and might wake people up in the middle of the night and all that noise, sure that like get some sleep.
But there's nothing that keeps that from happening at that location?
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, if you'll come to the mic and state your name and address.
My name's Darwin Sherry, I'm at 921 Parker. That's my neighbor right there. I don't live at the, uh, location right now. There's a row of trees behind my house, and I believe there's an easement on that north side. I'm just wondering, are we leaving the trees, or, I mean, i-if that thing's all gravel out there, I don't know how much gravel you're talking about, but, uh... That's, that's like a dust bowl back there. And, um, we got trees, I mean, it'd be nice if they left the trees between, uh, my property and his, I don't know what exactly...
Are the, are the trees on your property or on the...
I, I have trees on my property and he's got trees on the other property. There's trees on both properties.
Jason, you want to address whether you're taking the trees out or not?
That's what I was, I was looking at, trying to figure out how...
He don't have as many behind his house as I do, um, but there's several, several trees on the, both properties that, that I'm concerned about. I mean, I really don't want to look at it, it's going to be noisy, dusty back there. You know, it's in, it's in our backyard, is what it is, so, um...
I mean, we're, we're showing a five-foot offset, but, I mean, I, we could probably pull that back another five foot or something, it could be a 10-foot buffer.
10-foot buffer off the back property, or the north property?
North side, yeah.
It shows some trees on there, are those trees coming out?
I think we might be able to keep them if we go 10-foot off. We're not doing just a, a lot of grading back there.
Okay, you can't do paving all the way up to the property line anyway, can you?
Right, we were five foot away before.
That, um, that, that property is, um, um, if they come in and cheat them there, that's a very narrow street. All those streets are real narrow, no streets, no, I mean, no curbs, no gutters, no nothing back there. Floods everywhere, got a big problem with flooding in there already. Anyway, there's...
Jason, you'll be doing street improvements on Ingram on your side of the street?
Yes.
So they'll put curb and gutter on their side of the street, do the drainage across their side of the street, there will be landscaping in the front. I'm getting over to that so you can see how that, that works out?
Is, can they not, can they not make some paving? When you come in and you park a vehicle, or wherever it lands, it's gravel, that's okay. But if you're coming in there dragging vehicles in there all the way across gravel in there, it, it's, can that not be paved, the little stretch of that property goes back quite a ways? He's talking about putting the vehicles in the back of the property, can that we not get a strip of pavement through there to kind of keep the dust down?
He's asking for a variance for one year to not have to pave that back storage area for a year. Go in and put gravel down and get it stabilized, and then, and a year from now, it would be paved.
Okay, well, I'll get some dust masks and we'll deal with it for a year then.
Right.
I, I, I expect that, but construction should last a year as far as drought to them.
No, it shouldn't, you're correct, yeah. Now, what kind of fencing are you putting on the north side there, Jason? Is that a opaque screen, is it a wooden fence, or what is it?
It's a proposed privacy fence, yes.
Six, eight foot?
Yeah, six.
Six-foot privacy fence will be along that north side all the way across to there, which will keep you from seeing some of it.
I wish I was a little short, but I'm, you know, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Is it a call for the vote on the concept of detention?
Yes, this is a concept of detention, not retention, right?
Detention, yes.
Detention, yes.
Call for the vote on the concept of detention?
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney?
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
As is nine zero?
Then the variance for the deletion of the paved parking with a one-year bill of assurance for the storage area in the rear, correct?
As a motion?
That's a call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Call for the vote by Mr. Covert?
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes. Variance passes nine zero, large scale?
Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell?
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Large scale passes nine zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next section, board of adjustments, B-17-50, Heritage Mobile Homes Incorporated, 1412 South Thompson, variance to keep chain-link fence as is, presented by Gerald Williams.
My name's Gerald Williams, and I own Heritage Mobile Homes, and we have a enclosed area with a chain-link fence that's been there for 27 years. And we keep our truck back there that we use to tow the mobile homes. And also, when we deliver a mobile home, we pull the axles and tires, and they're stored there until a truck can come and pick them up for recycling. And periodically they do that. We've had a lot of, um, theft and vandalism in that area, and in times past, I've had them come in there and steal stuff and even cut the fence at times past and... But I would like to leave that fence as is and not be required to have to enclose that. I want the police to be able to see inside. And also, they were asking maybe we put a wooden fence there, but we've had a couple of times when the gang activity was even sprayed on our mobile home, that we had to go out there and take it off. So if there was a wooden fence put up there, then I'm sure that would happen again, and I can't be painting that fence all the time. So I'd love to leave it like it is, and it's been that way for 27 years, and I haven't had any opposition to it for all this time, so I'm asking for a variance to leave it as it is.
Staff comments?
Misha, do you have anything you want to?
What brought us over there to that property was not the screening, it was just found when we were there. So what actually brought us to the property was the vegetation and the, um, lack of maintenance to the gravel, um, in the storage lot. Also, some of the, the homes, mobile homes, looking as though they were parked and placed on, uh, the state and the, the city's right-of-way. While we were there, we did notice that the screening requirements, um, had not been met. Also, there are some mobile homes that I think are stored out on the gravel area that are not for sale, broken down, messed up. That was one of the, um, things that we had also asked to be removed or screened, um, in, in, with the screening requirements. So that's what took us over there and why we're here now.
They're just asking for a variance to not screen the storage areas, it doesn't have anything to do with the rest there.
Is that it? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So, so the storage areas are not grandfathered in then?
Well, they've been there a long time. I'm not sure exactly why we are at the point where that's changed, Misha will have to address that, because that hasn't changed over the years.
Well, remember that we amended the ordinance for the non-conforming use, where if there are other violations on the property, then it puts your non-conforming use in jeopardy. So for the screening requirement, because of the, the gravel, the maintenance, and the right-of-way, the other issues, it put that non-conforming use in jeopardy, and that's why he's here asking for that, because we said, okay, now you have to bring the property into full compliance.
Okay, so are we in the process of saying this property is not, not, is not considered a non-conforming, and what action has to be done to, to do that? I mean, does that come before the planning commission to make that determination that it's no longer a non-conforming use, or how do we move forward with that? I'm not sure that we've done that yet, have we? Yeah, okay.
So, so is everything in compliance that you...
I, I went, uh, the grass did get up a little bit, but if you remember back there, six weeks ago, it was raining every day, and we were spraying it all the time. But, uh, then there was some other kinds of weeds come up, and in my spraying, it didn't take care of those. And so the next day after they were down there, I did hire my guys to come in there, and they cut it all down and sprayed and, uh, it's, it's okay now, and I, I think the property looks good. It's the same as it's been for 27 years, and I just, um, had a loss to figure out why we're, where we are.
Now, there was some question about where the mobile homes were sitting, whether they were in city right-of-way or under utilities. I think we determined that they were 17 feet off of the back of the curb, which takes them out of the highway department right-of-way. But being under the power line, it's my understanding that as long as they're not being occupied, they can be under the power line? I don't have the answers to all the questions, so I don't know where we are on the rest of that stuff.
I'd called the highway department many times and asked them how much, where we could place the homes, and they had told me 17 feet off of the curb.
Which is what the same answer I got when I called. I don't know, I don't have anything that documents that, I've just had conversations about it. But right now, the issue that you have applied for is the variance to keep that chain-link fence around the storage area, and I guess, Misha, you all are dealing with the rest of it through the court system?
We aren't at this time, we were kind of put on hold because whenever we want, if we choose to write a citation, um, and he wants to go before the judge, then we, we need to know what to include on that citation.
So are you asking as part of this, if it's not non-conforming, that the entire site would have to be paved?
Yes.
Okay, for all of the area that they store mobile homes on and have for 27 years, would all have to be paved?
Yes.
And then the locations of where those mobile homes could be stored would have to be reevaluated based on looking at power line, utility locations, and/or right-of-way access?
Yes.
Okay.
There are multiple properties around the city, as you well are aware of, that, um, had gravel and are non-conforming uses. And this is something that we've really had to address this last, well, the last three years. We've been to this property, um, three consecutive years, but there's also properties north Thompson that we've addressed. They are keeping their weeds completely gone because they understand the same thing, that, um, they, they put their non-conforming in jeopardy. So this is not just subject to his property alone, this is, um, something that we're addressing everywhere. Yes, grass was tall, but that's part of having a non-conforming use, is that you maintain the property.
And did they pave some areas around their office for parking of visitors and people who came in to look at it? So they paved that area and established an area for people when they come in to look at it?
Yes, there's some wonderful asphalt area, their office area looks really great.
But they've made improvements as far as that area is concerned? That's been done within the last few years, too?
It is.
Yeah.
I hope you're not, uh, intending that I have to pave the whole parking area because it would be, I just can't do that. One, uh, for the mobile homes, uh, number one, most of those mobile homes have like eight axles on them, or some of them do, some of them are five and so on. If I ever tried to move one and it's a blacktop area, then it would just cut through that, it would be impossible to, to blacktop that whole thing and, and have it work. It wouldn't work.
Sarah, the question we have before us tonight is just the variance for the chain-link fence around the storage area.
That's what I, that's what I understand, yes.
That's the question that the planning commission needs to address. I'm assuming the rest of the issues will have to be addressed some other way, and whether or not they're non-conforming?
We have, we have a, uh, they did write us a citation, and that is going to come up before a judge here in the low wall.
Okay, okay.
Can I, where, I didn't get a chance to go and like get, drive into there, so can someone just tell me where the, the fence in question that we're talking about is located?
There is a brick building.
Aaron, you see that dark area right in there? That's where their, their storage area is now. That's the area that has been with the chain-link fence for, you said, 27 years?
27 years.
And right now, they're asking for a variance to allow...
That little, what, what, that little area right there?
Right.
Where you're taking your house?
Which is adjacent to that building.
It's about a, uh, thirty by hundred size.
Not the entire property.
Okay.
All we're dealing is, is with just this one little piece. What I'm telling you is this issue may not be over, but today, we're just dealing with this one.
Right, okay, that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to know.
And I'm assuming that the city attorney's office and community engagement will, and, and Mr. Williams will have to figure out how to deal with the rest of it, and how we deal with what the status of their non-conforming is, based on these issues.
Sarah, did you have anything else?
Um, unless you have any questions for me?
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments? To the commission?
The call for the vote on to keep the chain link fence as is around that small area. Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
The variance passes eight one.
Okay, so you can leave the chain, chain link fence as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You still have the other issues to deal with but we're just taking care of that one. Okay?
All right. Uh, next, uh, variance, we've already done seventeen dash fifty-one, seventeen dash fifty-two, David Leach, twelve oh two Christian Avenue, variance reduction of front setback from thirty feet to fifteen feet, corner lots, presented by David Leach.
Uh, yes, good afternoon. My name is David Leach. Um, I've purchased a lot there at the corner of Christian and Pleasant and what I'm gonna do, I've done a lot split and I want to do two duplexes there. But on the left side, where, on, on that corner lot, I've got two front setbacks. And I just wanted to, the duplexes are both gonna be facing Christian Street but I'd like to have that side setback just to fifteen feet instead of thirty.
Okay, so the, uh, corner lot would have a thirty-foot setback on Christian Street and a fifteen-foot setback on?
Pleasant.
Pleasant, right, okay. That's what he's asking for.
I'll still be able to meet the requirements for sidewalks and, and curbs and all that.
And minimum lot sizes and all that kind of stuff. It's just a matter of that, two, two fronts is what's creating the problem with that location.
Is that it? Any questions or comments from the audience? Misha?
I just have a quick question. Is this in any way, um, these variances, would this push vehicles out into the street?
No.
Or in the grass?
No, ma'am. It'll, it'll have enough parking for two cars in the driveway for each unit and a one-car garage.
Two cars side by side or two cars?
Front to back.
Front to back. So, okay. And it will not, those two cars will not, um, go over the sidewalk on either side?
It should be fine as far as my setbacks. I have another property just down Pleasant and I've got the same, the same thing. It's, it's two cars parking in the front and then one in the garage.
So you're not having any driveway access off of Pleasant Street at all?
No.
Just off of Christian?
I wanna do a six-foot privacy fence all the way down just inside my property line.
So it keeps anything from parking in that additional space on the side?
Okay.
Okay. To the commission?
Yeah, let me just, so, so the, the part on, on Christian is where the driveways will be and that will be a thirty-foot? So I have a thirty-foot front setback?
Yes.
Front setback, right. And so the side on Pleasant will be at the side yard?
Right.
Which normally would be an eight-foot but because it's a corner, it's a, it's a thirty and he wants to reduce it from thirty to fifteen. So we're still getting a wider side setback?
Yeah, if I could do more than fifteen, I'm, I'm good with that too. But I'll still have, I'll still be able to do sidewalk requirements, you know. So, as much as I can get there, that's fine. I'm, I'm happy with it.
And you won't fence past the front of the house?
No, uh, it'll stop on the side, it'll stop probably about five feet before the front of the building. So you'll still have a clearer view.
Anybody with that mic over?
Yes, you'll still have a clear view coming to the intersection because the fence will stop about five foot before it hits the front of the house. So you'll still be able to see coming both sides, um, coming, if you're coming from Cre- uh, Pleasant to Christian, you'll still have a good view, um, to the east.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
Any other questions or comments? A call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can give it to Patsy here.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda, B seventeen dash fifty-three, Max's Aviation, eleven oh six South Old Missouri Road, variance for modification on landscaping requirements, presented by ESI.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so the reason for this request is you can kind of see how the building's oriented with the, with Old Missouri. Um, and we've got, it's a frontage landscaping variance. We've got eight feet on the southern corner of our parking lot and we've got seventeen on the north corner. Um, so we're just something in that ten-foot landscape buffer. We still have the required landscaping in that, uh, frontage landscape area. Um, we just couldn't get to ten feet on that south corner of the parking lot.
Do you have comments?
No issues, you do have to go through some FAA requirements and you got all that. Once those are completed, we're ready to go.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Jason, I'm just, I'm, this is just a question from my education. Is, are they willing to not put as much out there or just not put any out there?
Well, we submitted a non-large scale and so basically what we're doing, um, to be able to get the building, office square footage is what we're basically, we're redoing the office.
Right.
Taking the office off and then redoing the office. So just to get the two rows of parking in, we have an eight-foot distance here and a seventeen. It's, it's just the way the building was oriented.
Right. So are they putting any, anything in there?
Yeah, we're putting, this is the.
They're getting landscaping, it's just.
We're putting the required landscape one for every twenty-five and the, this, this rubber.
It just has to be narrow or at one end because of the angle of the road. Right.
It's be a call for the vote. Call for the vote. Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero. Next item, B seventeen dash fifty-four, BLK LLC, parcel eight fif-
We determined we don't need that variance request. That's the one for multi-craft, right?
Yes.
Those aren't needed, so we, we can skip that one.
Perfect. Thank you.
See, we've done seventeen dash fifty-five and seventeen dash six fifty-six, seventeen dash fifty-seven, the avenue of Northwest Arkans, NWA, one oh three West Emma Avenue, variance for modification of signage per form-based codes, presented by Richard and Sandra Hurd.
Good evening, we're Richard and Sandra Hurd.
You wanna tell us what you want to do?
Well, we're wanting to, uh, we're opening a business there at one oh three West Emma. We've completely remodeled the front of the building and, and, uh, we think we did a pretty good job but adding to, uh, adding to Emma Street. But we want to put a hanging sign that runs, uh, opposite of the sidewalk, hanging out from the building. And the sign we proposed is a three-foot tall by five-foot wide sign. There's a, a picture of what, uh, we've designed. It's gonna, we plan on it hanging from an I-beam, uh, that's existing, uh, on the current I-beams, welding it, coming out with the two short pieces of chain and then hanging that to where when people are walking up and down the sidewalk, they'll be able to see our business. I'm not, I'm not sure what the, uh, uh, signage rules are for the size of the sign but that's a three by five or fifteen square feet.
And the height of, from the sidewalk to the bottom of the sign is?
Be approximately, uh, between twelve and thirteen feet.
Sign be lit at all?
No, sir.
No lights on it at all?
No, sir.
And it's not finished yet. That is like the first coat of paint, just FYI.
And I'll, I'll make a comment just really quick because I don't like variances downtown. Uh, but this is the second one. If you remember, we had to do a variance for Tyson for their sign.
You gotta do some sign ordinance.
And I also think you take everything into, everything into, um, view when you're trying to decide whether to do variance and the remodel looks great. And, uh, I think it's probably an opportunity for us to revisit the variance. If we've had two really good-looking buildings be remodeled and neither one of them, uh, or both of them had, had a variance, it's probably just a point for us to maybe stop, relook if that variance makes sense 'cause again, Kevin and I were both on the, helped craft it and one of the things we always said is it's a working document.
Well, and signs is not something we, we discuss very much.
Right, and we didn't, right.
So we have to go back and really address the sign issue from downtown. I think this is a very nice-looking sign. I think it looks good for downtown. I don't think there's a problem as far as.
Done good work on the building as well. My wife and I were down there Friday night. Looks good.
Thank you, thank you.
That's, that, that I-beam is right below your current sign, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The only thing I would be concerned about is, is if you had a heavy wind or something like that, can it withstand as far as?
Well, now, uh, to meet the sign ordinance, they'll have to meet the wind load and that kind of stuff in order to be able to get a sign permit for it, correct?
Sure.
So, we'll have to address that as part of the installation.
As far as how it's attached, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. Because we don't want it to swing off and hit somebody.
I didn't know you were on.
That's okay. One quick thing I would say, it's not a problem with the size of the sign, it simply matters the height. Uh, ordinance, the sign's gonna be about three foot too low where they want to get it, which they have to because of the signs attached to the wall. So that's the only issue we have here. The sign will be allowed to ride if they can raise it up.
Yeah. But thirteen feet is still an acceptable amount as far as being off of the, and that's one of those things we need to go back and look at, yeah.
'Cause I, if my memory, it was pretty close for Tyson's. It was about twelve, thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
And I think ours is sixteen right now is what that says.
And going back to the wind piece, I mean, you know the requirements of that and that the hardware that you use is for securing that, we'll be able to handle that.
I don't know at this time what it is but we'll do whatever's necessary to attach it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
It's a, it's a great-looking sign. I just, I'm, I'm addressing that from a safety perspective on there, so.
Yeah. It's a, it's a projection sign. Be facing, pointing out to the north. So walking up the sidewalk, you'll be able to see it as you walk up and down the sidewalk. No, sir.
It actually hangs over the sidewalk. Which our ordinance allows for that to happen, yes.
It'd be approximately six feet from the existing building out to the sidewalk.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Welcome to downtown Springville.
Yeah, thank you. Just curious on a timeframe to be able to install it?
You need to get with Mike and get your permit and as soon as y'all can get that together, you should be ready to go.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, next item, waivers. We have, uh, W seventeen dash seventeen, Tim Weiss, senior, five zero nine nine Bob Mills Road, waiver of sidewalk requirements, presented by Tim Weiss, senior.
Ah, you're doing good, Tim. My name is Tim Weiss and, uh, I am, uh, requesting a waiver for a sidewalk requirement for five zero nine nine Bob Mills Road. Um, there are no sidewalks in that area. There have been new homes constructed within a hundred feet or so, a hundred yards or so. No, there's no sidewalks. We're on the south side. We have approximately thirty acres. It's zoned ag and, um, it's trees and there really is no place to put a sidewalk without taking down, I, I mean, it would be a sidewalk to nowhere. So, that's my request.
Apologies on mispronouncing your last name.
Pardon me?
Uh, my apology for mispronouncing your last name.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Staff comments, even though we know what they are?
You know, my comment is I don't recommend waivers of sidewalk improvement, so.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Uh, call for the vote by Mr. Powell?
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Staff will prepare the, the ordinance or a resolution recommending, planning commission's recommendation to waive the sidewalk requirement. Counsel actually has to do it.
And, okay, I need to make a correction 'cause we did that as a call for the vote. That was supposed to be a motion on that one.
Make it work. It's fine. And they will recommend to the council. Counsel actually has to make that decision because once that's decided, then the taxpayers have to pick up the cost of the sidewalk if it's built in that area. The council can only commit money, not to planning commission, so.
Okay, so, as of right now, the, the waiver, you're recommending they go ahead with, no sidewalk?
Their recommendation is to the council to not require it. They cannot actually grant the waiver. Actually, only the, the council can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we have, uh, one other item on the agenda, relocation of billboard from three oh six East Emma to Lane Family Property located adjacent to I forty-nine, presented by Wit Weeks. If you'll come up to the mic on that.
Where's Wit? He's, he's. Oh, okay. Are you with Ashby Street Outdoors?
Yes, ma'am.
If you can state your name for the.
Okay, before we get too much further along, Sarah, can he represent Ashby Street Outdoors in that, that's the actual company asking for the relocation and Wit was the one who submitted the application. I don't have.
But he's a representative of the organization?
He's telling us, yes, he is.
Based on that representation, I think that you can hear it.
Okay, that's fine. It's your call.
My name is Adam Samuels. I'm the real estate coordinator for Ashby Street Outdoors.
You wanna explain to us what we're doing or?
We're looking for a billboard downtown relocation to a more suitable location.
Okay, y'all are familiar with the one that's downtown, located there by the railroad tracks. We've been talking about for many years trying to get that relocated. We did an amendment to the sign ordinance with the billboard section which allows ones that are located in downtown to be located to another suitable site. And it is not a violation of the moratorium on the building inspect, or the moratorium on, uh, billboard locations and they're proposing to move it out on forty-nine on property owned by, uh, Carol Lane. And they have a property ownership permission statement from Ms. Lane, uh, through the highway department to locate the, uh, billboard at that location. They have any questions? Do you have where the location on forty-nine is? You know where the property is just north of Don Tysen Parkway before you get to the Phillips Chapel Church? That is the Lane property and it's on the north edge of that piece of property just before you get to.
Yes, ma'am. Here's a pretty good detail.
On the east side of forty-nine.
The east side, okay. So it wouldn't be in the overlay area.
No, it's not in the overlay area, no. It's on the east side just north of the interchange at Don Tysen Parkway before you get to Phillips Chapel.
Was there ever a sign on this property?
Uh, years ago, I think there was a sign at that, on that lo, property and it was relocated actually to the south when the highway went through.
Yes, ma'am.
And so this would put one back on that piece of property that was relocated. I know they've looked for lots of locations.
We have.
We're having to find a place to put this.